I now call the meeting, this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:11 PM. We'll now take a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to the Board members that when you're called upon to make sure your microphone is on, and I will at this time ask the Coordinator to call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch? Dr. Herner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
I'd like to thank Alan Leon from the Communications Department, who it says here is the Lone Ranger on the AV team tonight. So, thank you for helping us with the broadcast for Channel 20. And at this time, we'd like to recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. And we have Mr. Earl Dotson.
Good evening and thank you. Rockford Public Schools offered another successful three-week music camp program this summer, where instructors work with our middle schoolers in orchestra, band, and marching band. This was the second year RPS partnered with the Rockford Symphony Orchestra for the event, which was at Mendelson Performing Arts Center. Fifty-seven students participated this year. That was more than double our numbers last year. Lori Langen and Kelly Price of the Rockford Symphony Orchestra were instrumental in helping organize the event. To Lori, who retired this summer, and Kelly, and the RSO, we are so grateful. We also thank our instructors, Jennifer Jones, who taught our string students, and Jefferson Music Director, Jordan Yee, who taught the band and marching band camps. Our camp coordinator was Mike Kikta. Please join me in thanking the Rockford Symphony Orchestra and our wonderful students who participated in the program. That is all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Earl. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for the freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, this public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will be next. When you are the second person, please come to the front in a vacant chair so that you'll be ready when I call on you. I will also want to point out that on the wall over here, we have the timer to help you with your two-minute speaking time and the total of the 30-minute time. So, we are, thank you for your interest and for your cooperation with our guideline. And our first speaker tonight is Allison Wang, to be followed by Clark Wang.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Capitalism is part of what makes our nation so great. For example, doctors get paid for medical services, and if they don't get paid, then it's kind of hard for them to provide adequate service. When doctors see a patient, they can ask themselves one of two questions. What will be best for the patient, or will be best for my wallet? Which question would you prefer if you or your loved ones were the patient? A district that is primarily concerned with money does not benefit the students. In 2013, only about 40% of RPS 205 students met or exceeded the reading ISAT standards. This means that many of the students are not going to have the basic reading capabilities to continue into middle school, high school, or into careers. And so, why are we putting construction as first priority? Are having world-class buildings better than having world-class education? I'm not saying that the facilities plan is a complete waste of time and money. It is true that some buildings have fallen out of the point of repair. However, I hope that the Board will make it very transparent as to whether this facilities plan is driven by the interest of students or by personal interest. I hope that the Board makes the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Clark Wang, to be followed by Maxwell Wang.
I'd like to quote Bill Gates in his 2014 annual letter. Bill Gates in his annual letter says, "His war, not my war. Four of the past seven governors of Illinois have gone to prison for corruption. And to my knowledge, no one has demand that Illinois schools be shut down." This is what Bill Gates said, not my words. And remember, three of the four governors who went to jail were lawyers. They all say they were legal. I'm not asking the Board to shut down administration here. But as a taxpayer, I do have a problem with your corrupt lawyer handling hundreds of million dollars.
Thank you. Maxwell Wang, to be followed by Jeffrey Wang.
Dear ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is Maxwell Wang, a former dropout from Auburn High School. And having returned to Rockford recently after about a year, I was ecstatic at the progressive go-getter attitude our district was displaying to improving the education of each and every student with a healthy medicine of $400 million to our facilities. Oh, wait, sorry, was it actually 200 or 300 million? I mean, whatever you guys changed it to during the past two days, just go with that, alright? So, I mean, put it this way, besides, this kind of optimism continued to remain today until I decided to read a couple newspapers as to what's been going on in Rockford, when I realized that the Rockford Public School English coursework does not meet the NCAA bare minimum requirement. Now, I'm not talking about some standard that's designed to pump out Nobel Prize winners or future presidents. If we take Illinois State Standards to be about here, NCAA standards are probably around here. Apparently, RPS 205, somewhere around here. So, according to the NCAA Eligibility Center, English 9, 10, 11, and 12 does not meet graduation requirements, while Algebra I is taught below the academic level. This has been going on for quite some time, but where's the plan for this? Meanwhile, CO2 levels in a few buildings are slightly elevated, and we got some consulting firm over here telling us to spend $400 million to tear them up and probably new ones. What is the priority here? Teaching students or building new facilities? I pray that the Board deeply reflects on its goals.
Thank you, Maxwell. Jeffrey Wang, to be followed by Ann Pritz Hall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jeffrey Wang, currently a student at Harvard, and I'm a proud Auburn Knight. And I just wanted to come here to say that I was completely astounded when I read about the discovery of the consulting firm, that the reason that our reading scores were so low was because apparently elevated CO2 levels and poor acoustics. It really got me thinking about like potential ways maybe to bring in some extra cash for the school district. So, like, for example, a lot of marathoners, they love to train in a low-auction environment so that they can improve their endurance. So, instead of like just tearing down these schools, why not just shut them down and rent them out to Team USA so they can go ahead and train in the highest CO2 chamber, Rockford Public School District 205? I mean, I can tell you, you're probably gonna make a lot more money from it than from suing my poor ass. Well, it also made me realize that I'm super grateful for this. Because, now I realized why I never had to wear the earplugs when my little brother was playing the school orchestra. It was because the acoustics were bad in the first place. My goodness, no, please don't laugh. We don't want the CO2 levels here too high, okay? Please, please, it's our safety right here. And then, I guess maybe my ears were protected, but then my reading scores probably suffer because of that. But, you know, I say it's worth it. I'd rather have my ears. But seriously, right now, just serious. As an Auburn graduate, I've seen so many projects that promise to turn around this district, such as, you know, Auburn freshman campus, ENI testing. And at the end, what happens to these projects? They all crash and burn miserably. All I want to see is one project that will succeed in raising math and reading literacy across the entire district. Because we can hire all the lawyers to talk about, you know, what's legal, what's not legal. We can hire all these consulting firms to talk about acoustics, CO2 levels, but we cannot afford to forget the most important variable in the equation, and that is the student. And by that, I mean all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Ann Pritz Hall, to be followed by Jane Hayes.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. I, I'm wondering how would Walker School's closure and/or demolition affect our community? It has its problems, to be sure. It's 100 years old, it has a 90% low-income attendance, and its ISAT scores are poor. Many nearby residents send their kids to alternative programs and private schools. Walker School has high energy bills. But many cities on the East Coast and in Europe take care of their buildings and preserve them. Good neighborhood schools, as we all know, enhance property values, a sense of community, and economic stability for the area. Walker's, Walker School's future will have a ripple effect, either positively or negatively for the whole of the community. We need to make Walker School desirable to its neighbors as it once was. I spoke with a solar energy project manager who advised me that Walker could be self-sustaining due to its unobstructed roof service at a cost of approximately $150,000 for construction of solar panels. It would also reduce the CO2 levels, as, which would be nice. $500,000 is budgeted for demolition. The homes in our area are vintage homes. They would be worth two to four times as much in a healthy economy. If rail service from Chicago to Rockford becomes a reality, our homes will become very desirable, and a neighborhood school will be essential to our recovery. If Walker School closes, of course, life will go on, but I believe we will have lost something valuable to the immediate community, the West Side, and Rockford as a whole. Our quality of life on the West Side will be diminished, and part of government's job is to be supportive.
Thank you, Ann. I'm sorry your time is up.
That's okay. Thank you.
Alright. Jane, Jane Hayes, to be followed by Roy Ford, or maybe Ray Ford, I'm not sure.
This is an original poem entitled "Bricks and Mortar", and it is a tribute to all the minds left behind by District 205. Bricks and mortar, sticks and stones can never replace a school or a home. Constructing buildings with phony facades, when humans Constructing buildings with phony facades, when human constructs are so flawed. Excess spending misled unchecked, staff and students lost, no more to connect. Educators know the pain of no relief because of all your erroneous beliefs. Bigger is better in buildings and classes to you, so public education is what you undo. Is there no future for wisdom or intellect? Is Rockford a true human disconnect? For all the buildings you plan to raise, we believe your decisions are crazed. For all the buildings you plan to build, how many minds have you left unfulfilled? Human connections are left behind because of decisions so bleak, so blind. Rewarding nepotism with monetary gain, principles abandoned for this we disdain. Padding pockets with business greed, for this our students have unmet needs. Chicanery, unanswered legal requests, our purpose clearer, we must protest. For all the students you fail to educate, for all the staff you dubberate. Next, we, the taxpayers, must choose leaders with more humanistic views. Bricks and mortar, sticks and stones, will ethics ever be what you own?
Thank you, Jane. Roy Ford to be followed by Arthur Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roy Ford. I'm an employee with Rockford School District. I've been with the district since 2003. I was gonna come up here and speak about an issue, because I seem to not be able to talk to the board members about this particular issue. And now, we at a crossroad that we need to make sure we resolve before I have to go outside of the school district. I have a form right now, I would just like to pass it. I don't think I have enough for all the board members, but I would like to pass it out, and you guys can get a copy. But I definitely, I'm demanding right now that I definitely speak with some board members about the issue that's going on, so I do not have to go somewhere else to get this issue resolved. So, if it's okay, can I pass these five forms out?
Just give them to Lisa. Arthur Jackson to be followed by Kathy Adams.
I reported child abuse, which occurred in the Rockford School District. I was told by an administrator not to report it. But as a mandated reporter, it's part of my job to protect our children. As a result of reporting the abuse, I've been retaliated against in a number of ways. I will continue to report specific episodes of child abuse at subsequent board meetings, locking children outside in freezing temperatures, and having ice rooms in order to gain compliance is not okay.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Adams to be followed by Anthony Greer.
I come to you tonight as a retired teacher who is now a volunteer with the iRead program at Byer School. When it was announced that Byer would be changed to an early ed building in the near future, we were all stunned. I have lived through school closings more than once, and I am aware of the trauma it creates. When Lincoln Park was closed in 1974, the students came to Wig Hill, and I saw the chips on their shoulders as they entered our school. Then, in 1981, Wig Hill was closed along with 10 other schools. Once again, I saw the same reactions from more families. Personally, I was able to transfer to a school that made me feel welcome, and it was a very positive association until I retired. Now, to get to the reason I am here, Byer is a true neighborhood school, where most of the children are within walking distance. There are only four buses that transport students to and from Byer. We have Black Hawk Housing Project right across the street, and all these children can get to school easily by walking across 15th Avenue. There is now a very strong staff led by a positive energetic principal. I can personally say that the feeling in this building is so much better than ever. We have had the iRead program sponsored by United Way for three years and look forward to continuing it for many years. The tutors are dedicated to the children, and they have benefited from their interest in caring. Mount Olive Lutheran Church is also an active group that tutors children with a program called Kids Hope. Their dedication is also apparent when I see them working with the students. A grant was gotten from the Boys and Girls Club for a program called Sparks, only for Byer School. It has been another positive to help these children. It should also be pointed out that there will now be only one preschool school on the West Side, Sommerdale. Byer is not on the West Side. Thank you for letting me speak and for doing all the hard work you have been doing for us, for our school district, to make it a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Greer.
Good evening. On tonight, I would first like to address, weeks ago, I was Reverend Greer, and the title has not changed. I'm still Reverend Greer, African-American pastor here in Rockford, Illinois. And tonight, I would like to talk and continue to talk on the concerns of ethnic hiring, the unethical hiring of different people in this district and the unethical behavior of firing practices. Giving you a solution, first and foremost, I'm not with the tearing down of the schools of our city in Rockford. I don't agree with it, and I'm against it. First, one solution is, we need to provide resources for the employees to be able to go to and feel good about giving the complaint without feeling repercussions for our African-American staff. The second solution is, give an adequate time to all administration, preferably the African-American staff, to do their duties without being released and place them in successful buildings. The third solution is, the reinstatement of Mr. Cooper, as well as Roy Ford, Tremaine Morrow, and Shalon Walker, just to name a few African-Americans that you released. The fourth solution is, to look at all African-American administrators that are assistants or head principals, and give them the same opportunity to become better principals. The last solution is, provide proper mentors for all administrators that exist that I have knowledge of. Mr. Rainey, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Frambro, Mr. LaRosa, Melissa Zachary, Ms. Hawkins, and any other African-American assistant principals or principals we have. We need to be fair all the way across the board, stop recycling one color and getting rid of another color. And the last question I have to ask you in this new year that's coming up, how many African-Americans have you hired?
I would now ask that if any board members have comments they'd like to make. Hit your light. We will move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items. Meeting minutes of July 8, 2014, accounts payable, purchase orders, payroll, contracts under $10,000, and travel. And the following bid recommendations, IFB #14-75, which is the Nutrition Services Food Recommendation, the IFB 1501 for musical instruments, and IFB 1504 for Fine Arts Media Lab Equipment, Recurring Contracts, including the Attendance Truancy and Behavior Intervention Services, the Special Ed Private and Residential Placement Contract for Boystown School, the YMCA Consulting Agreement for Fiscal Year 15, the Circles of Learning Collaboration Agreement, the Trinity Daycare Collaboration Agreement, the Acceptance of $99,000 PALS Fiscal Year 15 Grant, the Bilingual Certified Speech and Language Pathologist Pro-Care Contract, Certified Speech and Language Pathologist through Pro-Care, and Certified School Psychologist through Sunbelt. The other consent items are the Interest Transfer for June 2014, Monthly Investment Report, Approval of the Treasurer's Bond Annual Renewal Premium, the Facility Rental Fee Waiver for the National Council of Negro Women, and the Freedom of Information Act Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items? Still moved. Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled? Ms. Jackson? Ms. McCullough? Seeing no others, I will have the coordinator call the role for the consent items not
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now ask for a motion for Item 7E, which is the Contracts Under $10,000. Still moved. Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Jackson?
Yes. On two of them, there are charges for a consultant fee for structural transformation of curriculum. What is that?
Somebody that can you... Which item is the...
What does structural transformation of curriculum mean? What is that? What does that entail?
Alyssa Mabry? Is that Matt, or is that Vicki? Mr. Weisman, is that one that you can handle?
So, what I can tell you is that is professional development work that happened over the summer with teachers. We do curriculum work over the summer with teachers and oftentimes have either a teacher leader from another district or someone from the outside coming to facilitate that.
Then, you might not know, but for Linda Deal Callaway, she has travel expenses of $365. Where did she come from? It's for a 1.5-hour workshop? One five-hour workshop, thank you.
Mrs. Cyrus, is she back there?
I know that's a contract for our speech and language interpreters training. I don't know where she's traveling from. We were trying to pull up the PO number one. You call my name.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. And then, also on there, there's a contract with Pro-Care for $93.75. We are also being asked to approve this, I guess, some more contracts with them, so is this related to these ones, or...
Without knowing exactly which one it is, is it the summer school? Is it for summer?
Is it for summer school?
Right. It's for summer school services.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions on Item 7E? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the Contracts Under $10,000.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll now take a motion for the approval of the following bid recommendation, 8A, the Nutrition Services for Food. Still moved. Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCullough. Any questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough.
I would start by apologizing for not having contacted you ahead of time with this question, so hopefully we're prepared. We, I had asked for year-to-dates, because we didn't have a meeting in July. We usually get those the second meeting of the month, and I didn't have year-to-dates. But it is my understanding that our nutrition services is going to be running a deficit this year and somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million. So, the reason I pulled this bid is, I'm just wondering, and first of all, not sure operating versus equipment, you know, where our deficit is, but I'd just like to know where this $2.2 million bid for these reprocessed foods, how it compares to our previous year, and maybe speak a little bit to that with regard to the nutrition services deficit.
Mr. Schmidt, is that you?
Well, with the bid we have with this reprocessed food, it's very comparable to where we have last year. With these reprocessing commodities, it's where we go out there and say, through the USDA commodities, we get 10,000 pounds of cheese, and then we sit there and identify what we want. Do we want shredded cheese for cheddar, finely grated, sliced, chunks for whatever that we do need? If we have 50,000 pounds of processed turkey for us, do we want in slices? Do we want thick and thin? So, sometimes it's a little bit hard to compare year to year, and these are based off of estimates as we come in that we have to put for our menus when we start developing of where we put it moving forward. So, the comparison on the prices that we got and some of the unit pricings, the ones that we compare to last year were very comparable. They were right, pretty much where they needed to be. There were some things in here that we didn't use last year, so that pricing, we don't have a comparison on that. And these are gonna be, some of this is flow-through drivers that we have for our U.S. commodities.
So, the total, the bottom line is, is that it's about equal with last year?
It's about equal to where we have last year. And a lot of this is gonna depend on how much we use. If we don't use it all, then that will carry over. It's gonna be on how much participation that we have in the food service program in there. Because on some of these commodities, if we don't use up that bulk amount, they will get carried over.
So, do we have any carryover from last year?
Very minimal. There's a few, I'm not sure exactly right now what we have carried over from last year.
And forgive me if I'm out of line on this question, then. So, if we're using up the food that we're getting, are we not charging enough for our food? I mean, where is it that, are we not getting our revenue? Where is it that we're running this deficit?
There's multiple things that we have on the deficit that we've sat there and talked about. We're gonna present a recommendation to the Ops Committee when we move forward, but we haven't finished our final audit of our financials yet, unless Mr. Lewis says we have that.
And I do understand that, but since you don't bring those to us till October, and we're gonna be approving bids before then, as I said, we usually get year-to-dates, so we have an expectation about where we are, and not having had those for July, and now we don't have them yet for August, despite the request, that's why I'm asking it publicly, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Not, I'll ask the coordinator to call the role for the approval of Item 8A, the Nutritional Services Food Bid.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now ask for a motion for the Recurring Contract on Attendance Truancy and Behavior Intervention Specialist, Item 9A. Still moved. Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Is this a one-year or a two-year addendum to the current contract?
This is, tonight, it's not the, it's not, let's see, how can I answer this correctly? It's not extending the contract, we're adding to it. The extension occurred at the Second Amendment, out to 2016.
The current contract goes through when?
2016.
So, you're adding four FTEs, correct?
Correct.
And it says, the agreement is amended for the period from July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016.
Yes. The amendment is the four BIS, but the amendment is not extending the contract. Am I saying that right?
So, why is that piece in here, then? If it's only for the...
Are you looking at the executive summary?
Are you looking at the executive summary?
The agreement itself only indicates that it's further amended to indicate that for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016, YSN shall be paid an additional sum, which shall not exceed 2,000, 204,000?
Per year.
Each year, yeah. Correct. So that's not extending the actual contract, it's adding an additional sum.
Over the course of the current term of the contract?
I didn't say extend, I said it amended the contract. I didn't say it extended it. I said amended the contract. So we're going to pay $204,000 for two years, correct?
Year, yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
But in the fiscal end, on the, I don't know if this is the cover sheet, it says that it's extended for an additional year at 204,000, but in the wording, it talks about two years. So which, so it's?
You're actually voting on the contract itself. It looks like the executive summary is not as clear as it should be, but you're actually voting on the contract itself.
It's not as clear as it should be? Well, that's putting it polite, but okay.
Ms. McCulloch?
I would just like to say that this was part of our conversation at the Education Committee meeting, and part of the reason that this was being brought forward and was very well received by the, by the Education Committee was the increases that were demonstrated with the behavior intervention specialists at the empowerment zone schools where we had them. And I don't know if Ms. Jackson is prepared to give some of those figures.
Actually, no, that's not necessary. I have a question though. How long, I mean, how much are we at now with YSN? This is an additional 204, well, actually 408, but where are we at totally with this contract?
For fiscal year 14, 293,186 was for the behavior intervention specialists, that part of the contract. And for truancy part of the contract, 508,975.
58975?
508,975.
And this doesn't include what we're approving tonight? The numbers you just gave me?
It?
The 293,186 and 508975 add on tonight?
Correct, so it'd be the additional 204.
Okay. The coordinator called the role then on the approval of item 9A, the attendance, truancy, and behavior interventional services contract.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of item 9C, which is the YMCA consulting agreement for fiscal year 15.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or discussion on item 9C? Ms. Jackson?
Would like to have someone speak to the contract, please, or the agreement?
Mrs. Carter?
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Jackson, this is a recurring contract. It's part of the partnership with the Emboltsman Program for the Fit for Life middle school students.
Okay, so on one of the pages, it has session one, session two, so the capacity, 30 students, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So session one, well, first of all, the YMCA curriculum, am I able to obtain a copy of that? Is that available? To see what that curriculum is?
Yes, I can have Mr. Tyler Fagan for that too.
Okay. And so, session one, session two, when it comes to the Emboltsman education, it looks like session one students get two hours and session two students get three hours, from what I'm reading. Why is there a difference in the amount of instruction?
In terms of page five of nine?
I'm on page five, when it, just looking at the sample schedule, is that? Okay, never mind, I have it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies. Okay, so I can get a copy of the instruction, of the curriculum?
Yes, you can.
Okay. And how successful was it? You know, what, what did the numbers show with this?
Well, this is, this is just part of the Fit for Life program. Remember, the YMCA, they do the fitness and the PE and the health, the health, fitness programming. They don't do the instructional component. So you're asking two different things. It's, it's a partnership. Emboltsman is the instructional component, and the YMCA is the Fit for Life Health Fitness Program. So are you asking about?
So we're paying them 146 for the health fitness? That's what this part is?
That is correct, right. Because they're in a partnership with the Emboltsman Program.
Okay. All right.
Ms. McCulloch?
So again, we had a report to the Education Committee that spoke to this program specifically, as well as our other alternative programs. And I'm going to support this because one of the pieces of information that was in the first semester of last year, that students had a 79% increase in the credits earned when they were at fitness or Fit for Life as compared to when they were in their home schools. And in the second semester, we saw an 81% increase in the credits earned at Fit for Life. So to me, that was, those were pretty, some pretty successful outcomes, and therefore I would hope that we would continue.
Mrs. Powers?
So just to build on what Ms. McCulloch said, in thinking through what we heard at the Ed Committee meeting and going back through the paperwork, I guess, I, I am going to support it, but I do have questions because it's my understanding that students in middle school don't earn credits. So how you arrived at that calculation and how you define credits is something that I would like, but I'm not going to hold up supporting this. But I, you know, when we've talked about middle schoolers being on track and credits and things, it is very clear, we don't, they don't earn credits. And so I, I just want to make sure that I understand moving forward, how you determined that increase and what that represents. So we can talk offline, but I just wanted to make note that that was said, but it's not totally clear to me. So we'll follow.
Okay. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 9C, the YMCA consulting agreement for fiscal year 15.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins? Oh, absent. Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
With five yeses, one no, and one absent from the vote, the motion passes.
Thank you. We will now move on to the next section of our agenda, the closed session consent agenda items, including the residency hearing summary of findings. Item 11B, that notice remedy was pulled by administration. C is the resolution to remedy JT. Item 11D was pulled by administration. And E is notice to terminate MB. The appointment of David Brown as the 10-month assistant principal. Appointment of Alina Lund as a 10-month assistant principal. The appointment of Amy Galvin as a 10-month special ed administrator. The appointment of Elizabeth A. Wolfgram as 10-month special ed administrator. The appointment of Rebecca Frankel as a 10-month special ed administrator. The appointment of Valerie Ranzino as a 10-month special ed administrator. The appointment of Rachel Hale as a 10-month special ed administrator. The appointment of Brett Vosberg as a 12-month special ed administrator, who is no relation to Matt Vosberg, it's a completely different spelling. Appointment of Sonia Perez as a 12-month special ed administrator. And the appointment of Melissa Yuska as a 12-month special ed administrator. And the HR revised organizational report and addendum. And the following closed session consent items for student discipline, in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student? What's that? Hold on one second. These were both CPAs, weren't they? The expulsions of the following students are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional, conditional probationary agreement for the entire 2014-15 school year. That is student EJZ4 and TJG5. And the following students have also been given, granted a conditional probation agreement, student ADR2 and JDM3. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
C?
Under what number?
I'm sorry. 11.
11C?
And then E through P.
E through P, okay. Can we, yeah, can we do that as a group? Okay, thank you. Any others that I, board members would like to have pulled? Not, I will have the coordinator call the role on the items not pulled for closed session.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the items that were pulled. That would be 11C and 11E through 11P.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Ms. McCulloch, is that a second from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There is no discussion. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of those items pulled.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Scravano. It's a really important evening, and I'm excited to, first of all, spend some time thanking the community tonight. We had an amazing turnout from the community over the last year, as we talked about, our Facilities Task Force recommendation. We had over 40 community meetings, over 1,000 attendees, and over 600 public comments were submitted. We met in every elementary school in the district, and we had a very, very engaging process. I also want to highlight the work of the Facilities Task Force. Many of those Task Force members are here this evening. They personally attended just under 40 meetings, in addition to their attendance at many of the 40 community meetings that we had. It was a very, very detailed and painstaking process. And that leads me to the next group I want to thank. Both our internal staff and our external partners put in literally thousands of hours of work to come up with what we believe is the best possible recommendation to improve the learning environments for our students and for our staff. And finally, I'd like to thank the board for your engagement through this process. I know there was a lot of information to process over an extended period of time, and I believe that we are bringing forth a recommendation this evening that reflects the community and that engagement. And I am confident that moving forward, we will be able to execute a facilities plan that is one that best serves our students over the next 10 years and will lead to a process that ensures we are annually reviewing the progress on that plan, and we're regularly making changes as needed to ensure that we stay on track. So I want to thank everybody for helping us to get to this point this evening, and I look forward to the board's final recommendation this evening to move us forward with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports, and Ms. McCulloch, you can proceed with the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee met in this room on Monday, August 4. That would have been last week. We had three items on our agenda. One of the items was the grants update. Dr. Wolf updated us on some of the resources that have come out of the grants, one of which is Summer Camp 2, where we had 1,829 students who participated, participated, and they're in the planning already for Camp, Summer Camp 3. There was discussion about the 21st Century Grant, and 200, I'm sorry, 2,526 students were, received services through that grant in the after-school programs. We also had 268 students who were in six summer programs that were covered by the 21st Century Grant. The total number of students being served with the supplemental educational service this year was 1,390, and that's the additional tutoring services that are brought forward, based in large part on the, not raised to the top, help me out, guys, the federal program.
No child.
No child being left behind, how quickly I forgot, I'm sorry. And so we, this is our last year that we will be offering those supplemental services. There, there is a full report and all the PowerPoints available for all these presentations, by the way, because they were all informative, there was no action needed. But they are all on board docs under the library tab, if you go to the Ed Committee for that particular date, August 4. We had a presentation on the attendance and truancy in the district, our truancy numbers, and part of this is attributable to, I hope it's a large part attributable to our contract with YSN that we were just discussing, which is Youth Service Network. In 2011-12, we partnered with them. The year before we partnered with them, we had a 15.8% truancy rate. And this last year, with those services and with the eight behavior intervention specialists that we have, that number dropped to 8.5%. So it's been a quite successful partnership. We had drops at all grade levels in truancy. The attendance, our attendance in 2012-13 was flat at 92%, and this past year, in 2013-14, it went up 2% to 94%, which equals last year's state average. So we're on an upswing with our attendance as well. And that increase was at all grade levels. The only place we saw a drop in attendance was in our charter schools. The graduation rate, more good news there. The preliminary, we have, obviously, we do have the reports for last year, where it went up 2% from 62 to 64%. And the preliminary report just came back, it went up another 2% this year. So it continues to be on the upswing. The other area, the third area that we had to report on was the alternative education. There were gains in attendance, and those figures, and the bar charts are all online with the PowerPoints. We also saw an increase in the credits earned for all the students, for all the students, for the students at ILC, who doubled the number of credits compared to those that they'd earned the previous year when they were in their home schools. So for, at ILC, the students who came in last year, who earned 272 credits the previous year in their home schools, there were 553 credits earned the following year. And it was my understanding that at Fit for Life, that those numbers, although I use the word credits, were, were actually classes that had been passed. It's kind of a semantics piece, because Ms. Powers is absolutely correct, we don't earn credits at middle school, we pass classes. So we had lots of good news coming forward. We have another meeting coming up in September, because Labor Day is on the first, and we typically meet on the first Monday of each month. We will be meeting on the 8th, and it'll be in this room at 5:30. The agenda will be posted the week before. Thank you, Mr. Scravano.
Mr. Rollins, you may proceed with the Operations Committee report.
Thank you. The Operations Committee met here in this room on August 5 at 5:30 PM. We had a presentation on a proposal for a new payroll timekeeping system. It was a very thorough and comprehensive presentation by our, I don't know her title, but Patty Rhodey, I think is, is her name. And the general issue is that our timekeeping system is obsolete and inadequate, given the new requirements that are going to be implemented under the employer mandate of the Affordable Care Act. the Affordable Care Act. We have to move to a new time system that will let us more accurately record people's time. This will apply to all of our employees or all of our bargaining unit employees other than the REA. This does not apply to the REA, want to make that clear. There was a recommendation, they looked at three different systems, and they had a pretty good basis for the recommendations they made. The recommendation they made was not the lowest cost system, but it wasn't the highest cost system. It was the system that probably had the best reviews and that they thought would best, work best with our system and our Sun Guard system. They are currently working on the contract, understand legal is working on the contract. So that is not being brought before the board tonight until they have that contract ready to go, so that we can take a look at the contract. So I assume that'll be coming at a future board meeting. We had a facilities plan update from Mr. Schmidt. You know, in general, if you've been reading the paper, you've been seeing the updates, you've been doing a lot of paving work. If you drive around town, you can see the paving work. Probably the most exciting is the first of the field houses that we started. Auburn Field House should be ready by the time school starts, most of it. There are a few things inside that won't be ready until shortly after school starts. Hopefully, we can have a big ribbon cutting for that, and that'll be exciting. Mr. Lewis talked to us about investment philosophy, he was looking for some direction. We do have some investments that are coming due. He was looking for some direction from the committee as to whether we thought that they should go longer term or shorter term. I think the consensus was none of us has a crystal ball. We have a lot of cash in our reserves. Unfortunately, because of legal requirements, we can only invest in collateralized deposits, which pay almost nothing. So unfortunately, those deposits don't pay as much as we wish they would. What we, the consensus was simply follow what is traditionally what's called a laddering approach, which is just have investments of varying maturities going out to about two years, I think we talked about, and that that was probably the best approach. I don't think there was a subcommittee update from the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. There were a few things that were not on the agenda that we talked about. Normally, that was the meeting where we get the preliminary fiscal year fourteen financial results. Apparently, the auditors are still discussing some adjustments with the administration, so they asked to put that off, so we did not get those preliminary fiscal year fourteen financial results. We talked about how we're doing with start of school. As of last week, anyway, our kindergarten enrollment was down compared with years past, and I don't know if Mr. Schmidt, if you've got anything updated to share on that, or if there's anything else you want to mention about that?
Eighteen hundred and sixty-four kids.
Do you have any idea how that compares with this time last year?
No, I do not. I do not have that data in front of me.
Okay. So we did expect, apparently, some decrease this year in kindergarten enrollment, but this is a little bit more of a decrease than we expected. So we'll see what happens on the first day of school. We may have a lot of kids show up on the first day of school. We really won't have firm numbers on that until they do what's called the fall census, which occurs sometime after the first day of school. We talked about the Maintenance Capital Refreshment Plan that we've talked about as a committee. Mr. Schmidt indicated that they are working on that and that they'll bring a draft to us in the near future. And then there was a recommendation made by the committee that we'll be talking about later on tonight, I think, to establish a Facilities Plan Oversight Committee in connection with this facilities plan that we're going to talk about tonight. That was the meeting. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 2nd, in this room at 5:30 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. We are now on to action items, and our first action item tonight is the IMRF Military Service Credit Resolution that was presented by Mr. Lewis. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion on this item sixteen A? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the IMRF Military Service Credit Resolution.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is the Board Policy 7.180, the Students Preventing Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment Policy that Attorney Holy presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this policy revision?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the coordinator to call the roll on the approval of the policy revision for 7.180.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes unanimously.
Our third action item is the Recruiting Agreement for the Chief Human Resource Officer Replacement. Is there a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Mr. Connor moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
The last board meeting, we talked about, I guess, tightening up some language on that. So did that take place?
The language has been tightened up based on your recommendation.
We're still, it's twenty-one thousand dollars to recruit for the CHRO.
That's correct.
Last time we recruited, I believe we paid five thousand dollars, and so, any idea why the increase?
I can tell you that standard recruiting agreements are anywhere from thirty to thirty-three percent of the first year's annual compensation, and the quotes that I got all came in at that, except for the provider that I'm recommending, which came in at a flat rate due to the relationship that this company has with the district and the understanding and knowledge of the cultural attributes and what might make a potential candidate successful in the chief HRO position.
I guess I would ask, are they aware of our, the board priority and our diversity plan, and keep that in mind as they recruit for this position?
If they aren't now, they certainly will be.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the Recruiting Agreement for the Chief Human Resource Officer Replacement.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Our fourth item tonight is the Facilities Plan Recommendation from the Facilities Task Force Subcommittee and DLR. Is there a motion and a second? Set forth the, that was set forth in the Administrative Executive Summary, is there a motion to approve this?
I'm going to make a motion, but I should prob, it's pretty long, and I should probably read it.
Go ahead.
So I move to amend the Facilities Plan previously approved by the board on August 4th, 2012, to adopt Phase 1A as presented on August 12th, 2012, as the board-approved Facilities Plan, and to incorporate in this board-approved Facilities Plan the school closings and additional work described in the Report of the Facilities Task Force presented to the board at its meeting on July 8th, 2014, subject to the following. The construction time for building new schools will be driven by educational needs and outcomes for the entire district and the overall financial condition and needs of the entire district. The district will not incur any expense to build new schools as a part of that revised plan until: A) passage of a referendum supporting construction of one or more new schools; B) a full report and recommendation by the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee regarding the feasibility of accomplishing the entire Facilities Plan within the allocated budget is presented to and approved by the board at the board's first meeting in December 2015; and: C) in conjunction with that report and recommendation by the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee, a presentation is made to the board of the final audited FY15 budget results, together with an overall presentation of the district's projected budget needs over the remainder of the Facilities Plan. Two: the board recommends that one of the district's elementary schools be named or renamed, as applicable, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School, and asks that this name be considered pursuant to Board Policy 4.152. Three: the administration will present an appropriate budget, make recommendations to the board for new classroom furniture as appropriate for all the district schools. Four: as it implements the Facilities Plan, the administration will also appropriately identify funds to complete the additional deferred maintenance as identified in the Facilities Plan, currently estimated sixteen million dollars. Five: the administration will present an appropriate budget and make recommendations to the board for the demolition or disposal of any buildings not covered by the Facilities Plan that are owned by the district and for which the administration determines the district has no expected use within the foreseeable future. And finally, six: although not part of the Facilities Plan, the administration will continue to explore ways to air-condition school buildings in the district that do not currently have central air conditioning and where opportunities exist outside of the Facilities Plan through grants or otherwise, will begin adding air conditioning to those schools.
Thank you. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. Discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I want to ask a question first. It talks about a Facilities Plan Oversight Committee. There is not one, correct?
Currently, there is not one.
Just wanted to be clear.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I guess I've got some comments, because I think it's important on something that is this important and of this much interest to the community that we give some idea of what we're thinking. Now, first off, there's two different areas that I want to comment on. One is the thought as part of the plan that we're going to close schools and consolidate schools. And certainly, when we began this process, that wasn't something that I was looking to do. I'm a fan of neighborhood schools, I like neighborhood schools, and it wouldn't be my preference to close schools. One of the schools that we're proposing to plan is in my neighborhood. The proposal is not particularly making my neighbors happy with me. But ultimately, I understand the, some of the financial constraints that we face. I understand that we have to balance those financial constraints with other issues and other considerations, and I want to take this opportunity to thank my neighbors for giving me multiple opportunities to try to explain to them our thinking in terms of why we may need to close schools. And I understand that I may not have convinced everybody, I understand that people may continue to disagree, but ultimately, you know, as a board member, I have to do what I think is best for the entire school district. And so that's all I want to say on that. I do know that there's an intense amount of interest in, at least in certain areas, on both sides maybe, about whether or not we build new schools. So I want to make some personal comments about that. If you spend enough time with educators, and if you're lucky enough to live with one, you can become familiar with the phrase Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. And it's, must be required reading in some education course. But really, all it talks, all it means is establishing what your needs are. And I suppose, I'm guessing, that, you know, for Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, it's probably talking about such fundamentals as shelter and food and clothing, and, but it applies to organizations as well. And what we're doing tonight, part of what we're doing tonight, a large part of what we're doing tonight, is establishing what our hierarchy of needs is as a district. And when it comes to establishing those needs, I think that's got to be a reflection of the community, and I think the board, as the representatives of the hundred and ninety-four thousand people that live in this community, in the district, that is how many people live in the district as of the last census, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, I think the board has got to be involved in that. I've made the comment before, and I'm making it in tonight, that I'm thinking about making up business cards that just say juggler, because that's what we do. We juggle. We have lots of different balls in the air, and part of what we do is try to figure out which balls we have to catch and which balls we don't have to catch, and try to keep our eyes on all of those balls. What we've got right now, just related to the Facilities Plan in some way, shape, or form, within the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar Facilities Plan that's being proposed, we now have the New Schools Ball, which some people are intensely interested in. We also have the rest of the plan, where we've committed to improving the educational environment in every school in this district, and that's what most of the rest of that plan is about. Outside that two-hundred-and-fifty-million, we have to equip those schools with new furniture. There are some staff members who have said that equipping the schools with new furniture is more important to their educational environment than the bricks on the outside of the school, because that's what gets them the flexible learning environments that they want. But that's not part of the two-hundred-and-fifty-million, that's an additional ten million dollars that we have to come up with to get that furniture over the life of the plan. We have an additional deferred maintenance that originally started out at forty-three million dollars. When we looked at the facilities back in 2011, did a year-long survey, we sort of divided the maintenance, the deferred maintenance that was identified into two different categories, mostly based on what we thought we could fund. And the second category that wasn't being funded at that time was about forty-three million dollars. The administration's worked to bring that number down to about sixteen million dollars of deferred maintenance that everybody agrees is out there, and everybody agrees has to be done. But for, and they prioritize that. But for instance, the very first top priority on that sixteen million dollars are the windows at Riverdale. When whoever was doing the building condition analysis went out to Riverdale, they rated the windows on that facility, elementary school, at a zero. That's the condition of the windows on Riverdale. They're not part of the Facilities Plan. They're outside of the Facilities Plan. We have to, over the next ten years, in addition to the Facilities Plan, we have to figure out how to fix things like that. We have our normal operations. Some of the Facilities Plan that's being proposed and will be adopted tonight is being funded by the hundred-and-thirty-nine-million-dollar in general obligation bonds that the community approved. Some is being funded by a transfer from reserves, and some of it is a commitment from the board going forward to use annual money, CPPRT, operations and maintenance funds, and even health, life, safety funds that would otherwise be available for use in the facility. To get to that two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, those are some of our revenue sources. And, you know, are we going to be able to do that and meet our operational needs? One of the balls we've got up in the air is our tax rate. You know, some of the same people I was getting emails from about the Facilities Plan asked me to attend a meeting two months ago so they could express their concern about our tax rate. We have a tax rate in this community that some people think is killing economic development, and we have to keep our eye on that ball. And then, of course, there's student achievement. And with respect to the Facilities Plan, I just, the only comments I want to make about that, when, in one of the early meetings with the consultant that was brought in, DLR, it was either in a board meeting or an operations committee, I asked what data there was that buildings affected student performance. And what I remember being told was there's three things they look at. There's data, the studies have really only shown correlations in three areas: air quality, light quality, and sound quality. And when DLR did its analysis, which we finally got at the, towards the end of last week, they did an analysis of every one of the schools, and they looked at three different areas. They looked at quote-unquote "condition," they looked at energy usage or energy efficiency, and they looked at educational adequacy, or what they called educational adequacy. And, you know, the only comment I've got there is when we talk about improved learning environments, and we talk about educational adequacy, if you actually look at the educational adequacy piece of the DLR, you might be surprised at how some of the buildings come out, when you juxtapose that against some of the discussion that's been had. So our job as a board, I think, this is my personal opinion, is we have to figure out which of those balls is the most important. Out of all of those balls that I've just listed, you know, which is so important that we can't afford to drop it? There's one other ball that's up in the air that I'd like to have up in the air, or one other need that I think we have that sometimes we don't talk about. I'm not from Rockford. I moved here in 1990, which was kind of an interesting time for the school district and the community as a whole, but I do try to talk to people and listen to people about their experiences with Rockford. My wife went to Auburn High School, she graduated from Auburn High School. When she went to Auburn High School, every other light had been turned off to save energy. None of the lights at Guilford have been turned off. And we don't talk about things like that too much, but stuff like that actually happened in this district, and that's not the worst example. And so one of the things that we have to do as a district, I think, this is me, is build trust. We have to build trust that we are not going to, at the expense of some schools, put more resources into other schools, that we're going to treat everybody fairly, that we're going to make sure that we equalize resources in the schools, that we actually make a commitment that we are going to get to every one of these schools and increase the educational adequacy in every one of those schools. And I know there are some people who are, who feel passionately that in order to transform Rockford, we have to build new schools, two new schools, one new school, two new school, and I'm suggesting to you that in order- And I'm suggesting to you that in order to transform Rockford, we will be much more transformational if we can build trust. And that, I think, is what we need to do as a board, as a district, and as a community, is working on building trust. Now, I think we have a great opportunity here. And the great opportunity that we have here is to spend the next year and a half making sure that we can do both of those things. And that is what I would like to see this district do. That is why I am going to support the motion that's just been made. And I think that's the way we should look at it, is a great opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, any other board member questions or comments? No, and I'll have the-
Sorry, Mr.-
Ms. Powers?
I, too, want to share some of my thoughts. And it really covers three things. One is the overall content of the facilities plan. Two is what's happened over the last 60 days. And then, thirdly, oddly enough, that Tim should end with trust. I do want to speak to the process over the last couple of days, and what that means to impacting my vote. First of all, as it relates to the overall content of the facilities plan, I agree with closing schools. There were many people in my sub-district who did not vote for me the first time I ran, because I told them that I would not go out and advocate to reopen New Milford. It was not the right thing to do. It was a community school. Both my kids went there. It was a hard decision. I also knew, though, that we were completely underutilized within this community, and that we had to start making tough decisions in order to change the direction we were headed. And so I supported the closing of New Milford School as a new board member and did not spend time going back trying to reopen that school. Fortunately, many people in my sub-district agreed with me, and here I am. It's a tough thing, but we do need to close some schools. So I do agree with that part of the overall facilities plan. The process, as Dr. Jarrett outlined, I will say that I am proud of the overall general inclusive nature of having meetings available all throughout the city at different times. They were organized, having a way for parents, teachers, and community members to provide feedback. I do think that that was quite an undertaking, in that we did that well. We are not great at executing, but that was a good execution. The next thing, in terms of over the last 60 days, when we first started to get plans A, B, and C, and the committee meetings, and where people, specifically board members, were starting to shake out on that, you know, there were concerns. Because as Mr. Rollins pointed out, there was underfunding as it related to furniture and fixtures, and some other things. And so from the beginning, I have been concerned about the overall funding, not of new buildings and not of the facilities plan. My concern is that this committee, this, excuse me, this community, many of the same members that are out there now, many of the same people who emailed me before about being absolutely adamant about the delivery of the high school academy model, and what this community needs to do to turn around and really address our high school system, and that we had to support the high school academy model. And I support the high school academy model. The problem is that we do not have wall-to-wall academies in all four high schools fully mature. We do not know what a fully mature high school academy model is going to cost us. This summer, Mr. Hickman and some of the REA members have been working on another board initiative, which is middle school, which I'm the board champion of. We have no idea what middle schools are going to cost us. And thirdly, this board has identified early childhood as being one of, for all, being one of its priorities. And we rock at early childhood. And yet, we can't figure out a way to deliver on that priority of early childhood for all. That's a concern to me. We say it, but we're not doing it. So the funding, not of facilities, but of all the other things, is part of my concern. And those are things that are within our control. We have an REA contract negotiation coming up. What is that going to cost us? And the things that Mr. Rollins mentioned in terms of, you know, the things that were outside of the facilities plan, like the windows and those kinds of things. And when DLR first met with me, as you all know, I am about square peg, round hole, and non-traditional learners, they talked extensively about flexible learning environments, which is within the four walls of that building, not the brick and mortar on the outside. And the plan that we've seen so far makes that flexible learning environment kind of secondary, even tertiary, to what it is that's going on. And that is a concern of mine. When you turn the page to, you know, Mr. Rollins' crystal ball, and the things that are not within our control, you just heard earlier tonight that, you know, we are not going to have the no child left behind funds, and that there are pieces of that law that are changing, that are not changing, states are requesting exemption from it, and so on. We've got a gubernatorial election coming up, and we have no idea what is going to change as it relates to the state of education here in Illinois, and for that matter, a presidential election that's coming up. And yet, we want to build new schools starting tomorrow. Those are concerns of mine. And so while I agree with the content, I made my concerns known to Dr. Jarrett, to fellow board members, if they asked, if we had conversations. And I did not hide what my concerns were. Which then takes me to the third piece, which is what's happened over the last couple of days. As of Thursday midday, Mr. Scavano and Dr. Jarrett and I met for the agenda planning meeting, where we talk about what's on the agenda for Tuesday night. And at that point in time, it was understood from all of the emails and the communications that board members had had, that we were going to pass an amendment that indicated we were going to start building, or making the recommendation for building in 2017. And that all the board members had agreed to that, some had reservations about putting it out that far. And we did not do daisy chain emails, we did not do anything to violate Open Meetings Act, and yet we were able to get to a place of the entire board agreeing with some hesitation. And that they would make their comments, but were able to support 2017. Fast forward to getting my board documents, well, let me, also at that meeting, we talked about the fact that 2017 is a pretty substantial change to what the community had seen. And it was Dr. Jarrett's recommendation that we do not do the vote tonight in order to allow the community ample opportunity to respond to our recommendation, our amendment for 2017. We talked about it, said that there were pros and cons of it. And I left that meeting believing that we were going to push off the vote. There is not trust among this board for me. Here I am today, being asked to vote, despite the fact that I had set up coffees and different things throughout the rest of this weekend, next weekend, in order to continue to follow up with people in my sub-district, because I was under the impression that we were going to put off the vote. Someone on this board pushed, not with two hands, two hands, two feet, and their entire body, and did a body check to force the vote tonight, and to amend it from 2017 to 2015. For that reason, I will not participate in this vote. I refuse to take part in the dysfunction of this board. Dr. Jarrett was very clear with his objection to delaying the timing. We heard him out. He put it in writing. He met with every single board member individually, made it known. I have no qualms with Dr. Jarrett. Somebody on this board I take issue with, and I will not participate in that dysfunctional dance. So when it comes to me, please know, I do support a majority of the content of the facilities plan. I have big concerns about the things that we don't know as a community, as a district. It is not an indictment of the people at this table. It is an indictment of this ever-changing environment, and the way we have to, as Mr. Rollins said, juggle to live within those confines. And lastly, when we are asking this community to trust us, and yet somebody on this board doesn't think enough to trust me and reach out and tell me, or ask me about the changes that happened between Thursday and today, I take issue with that. So that is why I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion or questions? Ms. McCullough?
I would like to just react to the learning environment piece, because the very first component that this facilities task force looked at, did co-lab sessions with the community, did sessions with the teachers, did sessions with students present, was to look at learning environments, and what is a flexible learning environment, and what they would like to see in this district. So we actually started with the interior. And somewhere around December or so, the committee said, but what about the rest of the buildings? What are we going to do? So we started on the inside, and then we went to the outside, because we were most interested in learning and achievement. And I see that captured in this, well, this motion by, that Mr. Harner has put on the table, because it says, driven by the educational needs and outcomes of the entire district, as well as the overall financial condition. So it's just not, it's not focusing purely on the finances. It's also looking at what makes a learning environment one that, that our students will be, in which our students will be successful. And we do have an ever-changing, I think the other idea on this motion is that it does address the fact that we have some fluidity in our resources. And so we, as a board, and I as a board member, instead of coming forward today and saying, yes, let's run out and build new schools right away, first of all, I want to know that the community wants to do that. So the very first piece on here says, passage of a referendum. The second piece on here says that in, first meeting in December of 2015, that we will have a report from a committee. And as Ms. Jackson outlined a moment ago, does that committee even exist? That committee does not exist at this point in time, as was answered. But if you move down to new business, there is a resolution on therefore a new committee. And part of the reason that I feel very comfortable supporting this motion is I think that there's a lot of work expected, just having been on the task force, the amount of information is just overwhelming. But there's a lot of work that is expected to come through operations committee about all the facilities, that has taken away from the work that that committee is meant to do. And so by having an oversight committee that is looking at the finances, and looking at the buildings, and looking at the bids, and kind of putting together a recommendation based on where we're at and what's being accomplished, that takes that onus off operations and off individual board members, and off, and obviously, if you'll read, you'll hear the resolution, or you can read it, it's on board docs. It puts that together in a package with the administration, working with this committee, and the committee bringing together a recommendation to the board. And the timeline on there, to me, and I will say that I was fully aware of the 2017 timeline. And the 2017 timeline is not something I can support. I think that puts that, that decision out far enough, that there'll be a lot of other pieces that come into play, and it will also, there is some extra expense involved in the way that financial pieces have been brought to the board, that it will actually cost us more to push that off. I'm comfortable with the 2015, because it gets us through another building season. We get through next summer. We get through the reports back on that. We see how many of the other schools we've touched. We have another audit. We have another year of finances to look at and see how we have done as a district. And it brings us to a comfort level with moving forward with any sort of new construction. But I would like to say that I, too, part of the reason for putting that off is we made a promise as board members to the community to really touch all of our buildings. In this way, we actually are in the existing buildings, and we can start having some movement if indeed this board chooses to support the closure of the schools, to have some impact on buildings where we can start moving students. So I'm going to support the motion as it stands. I think the other components of it address the issues that, the balls in the air that Mr. Rollins has, has concerns about, you know, furniture and deferred maintenance. And I believe all those are going to be addressed, because they are part of the motion. And I'm going to trust that all that will come forward with the administration, because I believe they want to work with the board to get this done. And I also believe that they'll support whatever the board decides in terms of committee structure, if indeed we move forward on that committee. So those are my reasons for supporting this.
Ms. Jackson, did you have your light on earlier? Okay. Mr. Connor?
Change is never easy, and there's no doubt that this facilities plan will change the dynamics of what we're doing. But I think the number one factor is educational outcomes are going to be better, because we're going to have things like more intervention, more services for more kids, especially kids at risk. And if people have walked around and seen some of the buildings, the goal is not to have new buildings. The goal is to have an environment where kids, especially kids at risk, which is the great majority of our kids, need to have adequate facilities. And if you actually talk to people in buildings, which is something that I would challenge some of the folks in the room, is what they'll tell you is, interventionists share closets, or they have to have kids' sessions in spaces that are totally inadequate. So the purpose of these buildings is to make sure that the outcomes are better. That's what we'll do. And we all recognize, and Mrs. Powers said it quite well, that these are difficult, and that our community is going to be better for this, because in the end, we are going to do what we need to do, which is we are going to invest in the future of the community, and in the future of our school system, and our ability to support the employers and the needs of our citizens by having this plan. So from my point of view, this is our confidence, just like two years ago, when we were in the midst of the worst recession ever, this community came out and said, in spite of all our problems, and all the people who were out of work, all the financial issues, this community came out and said, we are going to do something that builds the future. So from my point of view, I think the hesitations are absolutely appropriate, whether it's financial, trust. There's a lot of issues. But what I'll say is, this is our moment to go past the naysayers and say that this is our community, we believe in this community, and this is the best thing for our community, and we're going to do this.
Dr. Harner?
I agree with much of what has been said. I think striking a balance is what this, this motion attempt, attempts to do, to leave some time, put a little bit of a governor in there to be able to have some transparency with respect to this facilities oversight committee, to come up with an appropriate plan. The order of what thing, I know that there's been some preliminary work on the order of what work is going to get done, et cetera, but I think it was done in a, in a little bit of a, in a way, that there can be more transparency to it, just as the facilities task court, task force allowed for transparency and open dialogue in that process. I think this will add to the, to the community's trust in determining what and when things will happen, and so that across the school, the school district, things will be done equitably. And we will get to some of the things Mr. Connor discussed with respect to better learning environments and better educational outcomes. It's very difficult, and over the next year and a half and beyond, there's going to be these financial balls that may drop. And then, and ultimately, the board has to still make a decision here. Whatever board is in place come December is going to have to still make a vote to go forward. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the amended motion. Or the, it's the motion. I'm sorry. The motion presented by Dr. Harner.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstain.
Our final item tonight on the action agenda list is the resolution for a referendum authorizing acquisition of property and building new schools. Mr. Lewis, you're presenting this?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, first I need a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Now, Mr. Lewis.
Good evening. The resolution before you is a resolution to give life in action to ballot language that will allow for the acquisition, if necessary, of property and to construct one or more new buildings. And that will be done in alignment with the motion that was just presented by Dr. Harner.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the resolution for a referendum authorizing acquisition of property and building new schools.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
We are now on to new and other business and at this time, I'm asking the board to suspend the rules to consider the following item, the resolution establishing the facilities plan oversight committee. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have discussion? Not discussion. So we have the coordinator call the role on the approval to suspend the rules.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
So this time, I'll then ask for a motion to approve the resolution that was submitted establishing the facility plan committee.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. McCulloch. Any discussion? Ms. Powers.
So if, I'm going to put Mr. Rollins on the spot because he told me offline that he was the one to put this initial draft together, but seeing as how, I just saw it for the first time at 5:15 when I went into closed session and we've not had time in between, if you could just take me through it or whoever wants to own this document, take me through it and how it is that these items appeared.
I'm happy to do that. I did the first draft. I think there was some revisions after that, although I'm not sure how much. What I actually did is take the resolutions that were last used by the board to create ad hoc committees and use that as a body. Actually, 90% of the language is probably the same as the last set of resolutions we approved for some of the other committees. And so the way this would work, we'd approve a facilities plan oversight committee. I do want to just remind everyone, this is a recommendation that came out of the operations committee. It was one of the, one of the community members on the operations committee actually brought it up and suggested it, and the operations committee actually recommended that we do something like this. So it's a facilities plan oversight committee. It would be approved to oversee the implementation of the 10-year facilities plan. It'd have one chair to be appointed by the president of the board. It'll have at least one and not more than two sitting board members serving as members of the committee. The president and the president of the board and the chair of the committee will seek interested community members to serve on the committee. By the way, plug here, everybody's interested in the schools tonight. Everybody's interested in the facilities plan tonight. We're going to be looking for people to serve on this committee, people who have preferably a good head for numbers, a good head for asking good questions, who don't have a particular agenda and who are looking to serve on a committee like this. Hopefully, the same level of interest that we've seen over the past few days from the community. We'll see that same level of interest when we ask for volunteers. The chair of the committee and the sitting board members who are members of the committee will review the applications and select members for nomination to sit on the committee with a goal of having at least five committee members and not more than seven committee members. Things get a little unwieldy when you get over seven. All nominations then will be made to the, submitted by, to the board for its approval. And then once approved, and this is a little different, I think, than what we did last time, rather than have people having to come back every year, it's probably going to be mostly the same people unless somebody drops off. So once they're approved, they can serve until they resign or they're removed by the chair for failing to attend. The committee can establish attendance requirements for its members. They can appoint ad hoc subcommittees if they really think it's necessary. They'll meet at such times and with such frequency and locations as the chair may designate, subject at all times to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. They'll establish whatever rules are consistent with the Open Meetings Act that they think they need to, to conduct business. Administration is authorized and directed to share with the committee any information that it requests, subject only to applicable legal restrictions. And they'll make a written report to the board at least quarterly and more frequently if they think it's necessary or desirable regarding its activities. And the chair of the committee shall report verbally to the board at least semi-annually. And the last paragraph ties in with the motion that we actually just approved. It'll make a written report and recommendation to the board at the board's first meeting in December 2015 regarding the feasibility of accomplishing the entire facilities plan, including without limitation the proposal to build two new schools within the allocated budget.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I did have one. Why did we need to suspend the rules tonight to form this committee? It could not have waited.
Because we, we, majority of the folks felt that we should move ahead and get, and get the process started.
Because I wasn't asked, so.
Any other questions? Ms. Powers, yourself?
Well, my question is for Dr. Jarrett.
Okay.
I wanted to understand, this speaks to, so this committee and what's outlined speaks to board members and community members. Can you just speak to who from administration or just kind of speak to how administration or members of your team will be supporting this committee? Have you given thought to that?
I've not given a great deal of thought to that, but I would expect that, based on my reviewing it today, that it would involve making sure that we provided regular, really contributed to a regular reporting structure to make sure that everything is very transparent, that we're showing, that we're doing a good job to be responsible in terms of using district resources within the context of the $250 million that has been committed to the plan as well as looking at the plan in the context of our larger budget and making sure we're doing everything we can to get the most value throughout the process and to communicate that in a way that I think is digestible and easy to understand. So I think, I think that will be our role, is to not only get the information but to communicate it effectively.
And I ask only because if we are going to adhere to Open Meetings Act, then I'm assuming that we, the committee would have the benefit of having a person like we've got, Ms. Fromm, that would be responsible for facilitation of documents and meeting minutes and all of those kinds of things. So I just wanted to understand, you know, again, we've suspended the rules. Apparently, people want to move quickly. I just want to know how quickly or what preparation you've had.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Not then I'll have the coordinator, Ms. Jackson?
I guess I do have a question because it says the purpose is to oversee the facilities, the administration's implementation of this 10-year facilities plan. And then they're going to make a written report at what point? So how is this going to work? I guess they're going to oversee it, they're going to make a written report. What's, what's the process? At what point are they going to do this?
Mr. Rollins?
Well, as currently worded, it's, they'll report to the board at least quarterly and more frequently if they think it's necessary or desirable regarding their activities. And then there is this one single report that got built into the previous motion where they'll make a full written report recommendation to the board at the board's first meeting in December 2015.
A written report on what? On the work that the administration is doing? I mean, what is the written report?
Regarding the feasibility of accomplishing the entire facilities plan, including without limitation the proposal to build new schools within the allocated budget.
Okay, so they're going to get that information from the administration.
The administration will be the source of the information and the administration is being authorized and directed to share any information requested by the committee.
I guess.
Ms. Powers?
Well, I guess, you know, while Mr. Rollins made the pitch for people who are, you know, numbers and all of those kinds of things, that if they're interested to apply, I guess I would make the pitch to, because the way I understood it is that it is not just ensuring, what I heard, the comments that came out of operations committee was that ensuring that we're getting enough people submitting bids and that we're really being representative of being inclusive to as many people as we can and those kinds of things. And while the numbers part of it is important, I also think though that better understanding and making sure that the plan is not intruding or interruptive in student day-to-day learning and things like that. I mean, I understand that we had to break ground at some point on the Auburn Field House, but, you know, we also know from students and teachers over this last year that it was noisy, there was, you know, it was disruptive. And so I think that not just having the numbers, but asking the questions about the timing and the sequencing and, and those kinds of things are just as important to ensure that we're not being disruptive to students. So I would make that pitch, that if you, don't have to be numbers orientated, let those people ask those questions, but I think that processing and timing and effects of what's happening with students on a day-to-day basis is just as important.
Thank you. Mr. Connor? Or Mr. Rollins? Or, how about Ms. Jackson? Are you, did you have another question? No? Okay, Mr. Connor.
Agree totally with Mrs. Powers on this. I think one of the things that should be clear is that the way I read this is that the intention is the educational community will have representation to do exactly what Mrs. Powers suggests, which I think is totally appropriate. So for example, hopefully, we'll get people who are directly involved in either teaching or one of those to be involved on the detailed level so that the coordination and the effect on the educational outcomes will be apparent and will be built into any plans. So I would totally agree with her on this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the resolution.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. Dr. Wolf, I think you are next up with the acceptance of the Community Foundation $20,000 grant for robotics.
We're happy to bring this forward. We would like to present a facsimile of a check at the next board meeting for $20,000 to support the work that the board has already authorized, the robotics program of the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois, based on a grant application submitted by one of our teachers, Chris McGee, has made this award, and we would like the board to help us buy those supplies.
Any questions for Dr. Wolf? Ms. McCulloch, did you have a question? No? Okay. Okay. Thank you. This will be presented at our August 26 meeting for a vote. Our third item on the other new business is the IGA Alternative Learning Opportunities Program. Mrs. Height-Carter?
Good evening again. The intergovernmental agreement is presented to you on behalf of our Regional Office of Education. They have invited Rockford Public Schools to join an ALAB program in order to serve more students. As you all are aware, last year, we did have a lot of middle school students on the wait list. If you all agree to engage in this opportunity, which is what, which is outlined in your executive summary as well as the agreement itself, you will notice that this opportunity will open up more seats for our middle school students and also provide flexible scheduling for our high school students. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Height-Carter?
Thank you.
This will come up for, and be presented for a vote at our August 26 meeting. The last item was the committee structure and discussion, which we moved to our Saturday retreat, a future Saturday retreat meeting. Is there any other new or business or agenda recommendations for the board tonight? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion adjourned. Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 9:03.